Are you here? Can any phone?
Yes, may I?
Michelle, oh, you're here.
Let me see.
Do we have anybody signed up?
No public comments, no public comments, public speakers tonight.
All right. It shouldn't be a long meeting, right?
No, it should not, and we are live. Oh, first and seconds. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Wilmington City Council. Today is Thursday, June 4th, 2020. This is the public comment portion of our meeting. And we have not have anyone for the public who has signed up to speak. And with that, we will reconvene promptly at 6:30 for the business agenda of the meeting of Wilmington City Council. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Wilmington City Council. Today is Thursday, June 4th, 2020. This is the public comment portion of our meeting. And we have not have anyone for the public who has signed up to speak. And with that, we will reconvene promptly at 6:30 for the business agenda of the meeting of Wilmington City Council. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Wilmington City Council. Today is Thursday, June 4th, 2020. This is the public comment portion of our meeting. And we have not have anyone for the public who has signed up to speak. And with that, we will reconvene promptly at 6:30 for the business agenda of the meeting of Wilmington City Council. Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Wilmington City Council. Today is June 4th, 2020, and the meeting will please come to order. We have the opening prayer by Andrea Queen.
In humility, gratitude, and great joy, we open our hearts, our eyes, our ears, our minds, as we meet to serve our city with the intent on doing good work, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent the members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibilities to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom. As trusted servants, we seek guidance on our deliberations, and on our efforts may we act wisely and well, and strive to reach our higher potential.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. To the public.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Present.
Councilman Congo.
Here.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilman Turner.
Here.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Freo. Councilman Adams.
Here.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Guy. Councilman Guy. Councilwoman Walsh.
Here.
President Shabazz.
Present.
Eleven present and two absent.
Meeting of the minutes of our previous meeting.
8:28, 2020, City Council met in virtual regular session on the above date at 6:30 PM. President Hanifish Shabazz presiding. The opening prayer was done by Andrea Queen.
Please receive, record, and file.
Second.
Is it properly moved, and second, the minutes be receptive? Except for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Committee reports.
None this evening, Madam President.
City Treasurers report.
As of June 4th, 2020, total investment $375,600,097.86 total cash on hand, $22,174,182.47 grand total, $397,774,280.33, billed to Jones Potter City Treasurer.
I move the Treasury report, we receive, record, and file.
Second.
Second.
Is it properly moved, the secondary report, we receive, recorded, and filed, and the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Just like take a second to make a little brief statement. Eight minutes, forty-six seconds, that is how long Officer Chauvin had his knee on the neck of George Floyd? As Brother Floyd is memorialized today, let us take a moment to remember and respect his memory. Moment of silence. As we are all suffering from the epidemic of trauma resulting in our youth gun violence, and the isolation of the coronavirus pandemic, and now the traumatic murder of George Floyd, this cry out of stress and pain and anger rang across the city, state, county, and the globe. Now is not the time for division, but now more than ever, it's the time for all of us to come together and unite, and we have seen the strength of us together during these past few days. As elected officers, and more specifically, as members of council, that always agree on everything, but I know one thing we do agree on, that we do not want George Floyd's death to be in vain. The demonstration of our unity thus far to address the cries of our youth, and our collective research of policy changes that we can start to implement now, surely shows the change that will last forever. Surely bring about change that will last forever, even after we've left this office.
Blessing.
Thank you. The result of these policies will result in the needed cultural change. As we continue to work together, and listen to the community, and work on the needed policy changes, I'm looking forward to working with council to get the things done, to right this wrong. And with that, I accept the motion to move to all legislative business.
So moved.
Is it properly moved, and seconded to accept online legislative business on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have two recognitions of nonlegislative business this evening. Are sponsored by Councilman Field, the recognition of moms demanding action for gun violence awareness month, and you might see many of us who have an orange in support of their efforts, and also a resolution sponsored by myself in recognition of reentry awareness month. Now move to the legislative portion of our agenda. Councilmember Gray, any legislation tonight?
None this evening, Madam President.
Councilmember Congo, legislation tonight?
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Councilmember Oliver, legislation?
Yes, Madam President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 20-030, Agenda 4815, in order to authorize a one-year extension for the Educational Access Channel Agreement between Red Clay Consolidated School District and the City of Wilmington.
I move this being known for the first and the second reading of the ordinance, and refer to the Educational Youth and Families Committee.
Second.
That's the, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's the first reading of the ordinance.
I'm sorry.
Always do that.
In order to authorize a one-year extension to the Educational Access Channel Agreement between Red Clay Consolidated School District and the City of Wilmington.
Second reading of the ordinance.
I move this being known for the first and the second reading of the ordinance, and refer to the Educational Youth and Families Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second, not being known as the first and second reading of the ordinance, and refer to Education Youth and Families Committee.
And when we all, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Council President, I don't have any legislation, but I have a correction. The Resolution for Guns Violence Awareness for Moms Demand Action is my resolution. I'm the sponsor. Thank you.
So noted.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
No legislation tonight, Madam President.
Councilmember McCoy?
Yeah, nothing tonight, Madam President.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, Madam President, I have an ordinance to present for the first and second reading.
Ordinance 20-031, Agenda 4816, in order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations.
First reading of the ordinance?
In order to enact certain traffic and parking regulations.
Second reading of the ordinance. Councilmember Johnson?
Oh, okay. Madam President, I move that being known as the first and second reading of the ordinance, and refer it to the Public Works Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved, and second, that being known as the first and second reading of the ordinance, and refer to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Also, Madam President, I have a resolution to present on your behalf.
Resolution 20-029, Agenda 4817, where as the Equitable Data Collection and Disclosure on COVID-19 Act, sponsored by United States Representative Robin L. Kelly of Illinois, require
I move for this resolution to be received, recorded, and filed, and adopted by a ye nay vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second, a resolution to be received, recorded, and filed, adopted by ye nay vote on the question.
Yes, Council President, this is an ordinance that is certainly timely. This is being presented in order to ask that United States Congress pass H.R. 6585, which provides for the funding for the collection of data regarding the equitable, and well, with the equitable impact of COVID-19. As we've seen, the capacity of our local and state public health centers have been stressed by the coronavirus epidemic, and this simply balances the scales. And what we need is special funding from Congress, so we can look at why do disparities exist? We've been talking about this in City Council for years, about the trauma of gun violence, and the trauma of the economic distress in our neighborhoods. So this simply is addressing the needs of the special crisis, and how these symptoms that already existed are now made worse. So we're asking Congress, I believe it's in committee right now, but we're urging Congress to act swiftly and provide this special relief.
Councilmember Walsh?
I'm going to support this, because it would probably be stupid not to, just to collect data, but you know, when the United States says they're going to collect data on stuff, it goes south a whole lot of times. They either don't complete the programs, or they just don't have sufficient data. You know, we had something like this come up with the virus not all that long ago, certainly not the way it's been this round, but where lots of Americans were getting a certain type of flu, and then come to discover that they never completed gathering all of the data that they had collected on it together. So they never came up with a flu shot for that particular flu. So I just hope the United States, especially with how crazy it is in DC, I just hope they do the right thing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Oliver?
Thank you. I'd like to be added on there, because it's co-sponsored.
So noted.
Any other comments for members of council? Seeing none, is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, and seeing no further comments for members of council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilman Congo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Adams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yes.
President Shabazz.
Yes.
Eleven present and two absent.
The clerk adopted.
And thank you, Madam President. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Councilmember Freo is not here, and Councilmember Adams?
Nothing tonight, Madam President, thank you.
Councilmember Dixon? Councilmember Dixon?
Nothing tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilmember, is that here? And Councilmember Walsh?
No legislation. Thank you, Madam President.
Well, that concludes our business part of our agenda. We are now moving to petitions and communication. Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to give my condolences to the family and friends of George Floyd. I'd also like to thank our police department for the effort that they've made to protect us in this very volatile climate. But we need change. We need to get together and discuss our problems, and we need to get together and discuss them before we have a major problem. So what I'm hearing is that the police, the administration, the public, and council need to communicate more. I also want to thank the peaceful protesters for finding their voice. We heard you, and I'm listening. Now, through my many jobs or careers, I've always noticed that people wanted to be heard. They wanted to express their opinions, their joys, their fears, their just anything, hope, and they want someone to listen. But when I came to council, I was really surprised and shocked with the impediments that were preventing people from feeling comfortable about speaking before council. So because of that, I introduced legislation and successfully got it passed for public comment in real time. That means that the public can come to council and give us their opinions, their ideas, while we are actually discussing that piece of legislation. I'd like to thank my council members that supported me in this legislation. It was a hard fight. We had a lot of opposition from council and from the administration, but I do thank you for the support of this legislation. I also would like to compliment you on your foresight of how important this type of legislation is. So what I've gotten from the demonstrators is that they want to be heard, they want us to listen. And I think that the best way that we can listen and counsel is to make public the procedures of how to come for public speaking to be courteous to them, not to put impediments and make them feel uncomfortable. And in fact, when I first came, some of the problems that I saw is that people were intimidated, they were interrupted, and they were even arrested. We want to be more open, more welcoming. We want to have a dialogue with the public. So my suggestion is for now, something that we can do right now, like I said, is to be courteous, to welcome people to council, to give their opinions, to explain to them how, well, we're on Zoom now, so it's even a little bit more complicated, but try to encourage them to join us in our meetings. So I think that if people come, we need to listen. And if the majority of council listens, I think that we would have had police cams, cameras. We would have more surveillance cameras in the budget. And the firemen may have their museum. Thank you. That's it this evening.
Councilman Congo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just want to agree with everything that Councilwoman Gray just said. I appreciate her. And for her, well, she was new on council at the time, and for her courage and her foresight to bring to us the things that she did. So I just want to thank you for that, Councilwoman Gray. Just want to remind everyone to continue to be careful with COVID-19, continue to protect yourselves, protect your family, especially the elderly and the children. I want to thank, again, those peaceful protesters. I want to thank the organizations that are putting together another protest, another march tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Harriet Tubman Park. I want to thank them for their courage and for not backing down when there were people in politics who asked them to postpone it, asked them not to do it. But they stood strong, and I appreciate them for that. That is exactly what we need during these times, we need people who are willing to unify people who are motivated to create change. That change starts with them, and we should listen. We shouldn't be presenting anything to them. They should present to us, and we should move forward with it. So again, thank you, young people for taking a baton and sprinting with it. We'll be there for you. I know I'll be at the march tomorrow. Just want to again, thank them and pray for peace and pray that we are able to sustain the momentum and sustain whatever happens tomorrow, that it doesn't go away after tomorrow. And I'm sure that this young group of politicians, activists, will continue to stay engaged. But during that protest, remember just to keep yourselves protected. There's going to be a lot of people there. Bring your mask, bring your water, and just be careful. And Councilman Vash Turner, Councilman Sam Guy, City Treasurer, Velda Jones Potter, owner of Silverbrook Cemetery, Paul White, a few others. We're having another food giveaway this Sunday. I'll let Councilman Turner give all the details since he's going to be in his district. But I just want to thank them for doing this for the last few months. We've been able to help thousands of people. This time, we want to be able to feed, I think it's 6,000 people. So just looking forward to that this Sunday. But again, I'll let Councilman Turner give us the details about that. So hopefully I'll see everyone tomorrow, 6 o'clock, Harriet Tubman Park. Keep the movement going. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, Madam President. I'd just like to also give my condolences to the Floyd family. And, excuse me, and tell everybody to be safe. I think with all the rallies, as Congo says, I think some people are forgetting that it's still a virus out there, and you still must wear gloves and keep the six feet distance and just be careful. And that's all.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes, I thank you, Council President. I just want to mention that Agenda Item Number 4815, I do believe that legislation should have gone to the CBT Committee and not Education, Youth, and Family. I just want to mention that. And as it relates to the, all that's going on, I do want to extend my condolences to George Floyd's family and supporters and all those that are in support of the positive movement. Eight minutes and 46 seconds, I can't breathe. And I also want to say that I am in support of the eight can't wait pledge, and especially the four that I think that are very easy lifts. One is ban chokeholds and strongholds. Require de-escalation for our Wilmington Police Officers. Require a warning before shooting and exhaust all other means before shooting. I do believe that these are pledges that we can make easily. And I hope that everyone will be very careful tomorrow. One thing is for certain, and two is for sure. I believe that those that are interested in a peaceful protest have good intentions and great motives. But the one thing that you never can predict is those that come with another agenda. And my prayer is that those that come with a different agenda as those that came Saturday, that we didn't know anything about, you can prepare for what's positive. Change is needed, and I believe now is the time. But I also ask that we all pray for those that we don't know that's coming, that don't care about Wilmington, that don't care about people, you know, that are out of jobs as a result of the looting and rioting. There were people that were looking forward to going back to work on Monday, June 1st in some of the restaurants, and those are the people that I feel for, that were not able to go to work as a result of the violent protesters, looters, and rioters. I want to see people put back to work. We talk about people being, you know, going to work at good living wages. So let's pray that we have a peaceful rally and that we don't have any more people that have to be put out of work. Thank you.
Sorry, that was on me. Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to reiterate a lot of the words that my council colleagues spoke about this rally that's coming up tomorrow. I want to say to the young organizers that stood in the gap to go with what their beliefs were. It wasn't easy for them. They were getting a lot of pressure from a lot of public officials and others to not do what they needed to be done that they believed in. And I just want to commend them for that. I will be at the rally to make sure that people that are there, that are from our city, that they see familiar faces, and I encourage everyone else that are elected officials, regardless of where you stood, it's already happening in our city. Come down there, let them see familiar faces so they can know that we're behind this movement and make sure it's going to be peaceful. I also would like to say, I'm going to say something different than what everybody else is saying when we're talking about in the community. But I would like to say to anyone that's not going to the rally, to come outside of your doors. It's going to be a nice day. Come outside of your community. Make sure that we protect our community, making sure that nothing trickles into our communities. Come on out, pull the grill out, have a togetherness as a community if you're not going to go to the rally. And I'd like to also say rest in peace to George Floyd. But however, our council up until this point has failed our citizens. This march was about if we would have had a camera, they would have had cameras on the police officers during the time he had his knee on his neck. We could get the truth from the vision, from the eyes of the police officer. So we put in for a grant, what we need to do is amend the budget and put the money in the budget so we can have body cameras. Simple as that. Stop playing politics, no matter where you are. Let's put body cameras in. Let's go ahead and put cameras on the polls as well in the community. Cameras is cameras. We need cameras all the way around the board. So let's make sure, let's do right. Madam President, I would love for you to go ahead and lead that charge and go ahead and amend the budget so we can go ahead and have body cameras for our city. On Sunday, I do want to go ahead and make an announcement that we are having another food drive. It'd be on the 600 block of Madison Street. It would be drive-through. You can line up on the Monroe side of the park, coming up on the Sixth Street side of Helen Chambers Park, and we'll drive around to the 600 block of Madison Street, open your trunk, and we'll go ahead and put the food in. Thank you to Paul White III from Silverbrook Cemetery, also Councilman Congo, Councilman Sam Guy, Councilman, excuse me, Treasurer, City Treasurer, Velda Jones Potter, also Miss Croker, the Croker Sisters, the Wilmington Delaware Link Incorporated, also Rodney Street Tennis Association, and also the Learning on Madison as well. So we'll be starting roughly around 3:30 on Sunday. Come out. If you need any deliveries, please contact myself at 302-650-8256. If there's any seniors or also families of need, please let us know, and we will have those delivered. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCoy?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to also extend my condolences to the Floyd family. I have to admit, I could not watch that video. I've seen a photograph, and that was all that I needed. I'm so sorry if these things happen to them, but the outcome, what has happened, the movement, it is, you know, it is definitely something that is taking people's breath away. So I just wanted to thank my colleagues and the administration in advance right now for their ability to listen. I feel as though if we don't, you know, we don't get this right. We got to make certain that we're actually listening, that we don't confuse what these protests are about and to lose the message. You know, they're being clear. I know we have had some people who have some real instances and issues of violence and vandalism and things of that nature. Really wasn't, I guess, they had lost their focus. But a lot of people are here, and they are very focused on what they want us to hear, and we need to make certain that we are listening. So I just want to thank my colleagues and administration that we listen and we get this right. And that we actually learn from it, and we foster real change. This should not be something that's systemic and secular that we will see every 25, 30 years. We don't want that. I don't want that for my children, and I know no one else does. But also, on another note, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Christina School District referendum is June 9th. Now, we do need to vote. Please vote. You know, our children need this. So I just wanted to make certain that people were aware of that as well. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I, of course, want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and extend my condolences to the Floyd family. Didn't watch the whole services, but if you were able to catch any of the services, it just was so moving. And hopefully, this is to see change towards, really change our community. Before I delve back into that, I did want to make an announcement that there is a new Wilmington Strong Fund. It's a partnership between the Wilmington Alliance, the City of Wilmington, the LACC, Westside Grows, and it has corporate, many corporate sponsors, including the lead sponsor Barclays. And the Wilmington Strong Fund grew out of the Westside Small Business Relief Fund, which started back in March. So it's an expansion of the program. And June 8th is the first round of deadlines in order to receive these micro grants to help struggling small businesses survive. I believe it's important, ever more important these days, especially with what we're facing with so much tension in the city. We have to remember that regardless of what happened with the protests, the small businesses still are where they are a week ago, or maybe even in a worse position. So, you know, the Small Business Relief Fund is vital and important, so please spread the word and tell the small businesses to get their application in. And you're able to have things covered such as rental payments, mortgage payments, and other small business expenses. Next, I did want to make just a small statement about what's going on. The time for talk is over. It's time for action in Delaware. Since the 1800s, when Delaware was home to slaves brought from Africa on the transatlantic slave route, Delaware has suffered from the epidemic of racism that has sickened America. From the days of the Wilmington Parking Authority case to the horrific and prolonged National Guard occupation in the 1960s to the current racial disparities in Delaware's prison system, where 54% of the population is black, but yet we only make up 22% of us citizens. Delaware has trailed behind many of our neighbors in striving for real racial equality. If anybody questions whether Delaware is really that far behind in the opportunity gap for its black citizens, just ask any family who lives on the east side of Wilmington where their child attends failing schools, and they have to also dodge bullets on the way to school. Or ask that black child's family in Sussex, rural Sussex County, in which the poverty is so intense that the child's only refuge is to go to school because they will not get a meal when they return home with no running water, or if they have water, it's poisoned. The final blow for me came this week as I watched images of Officer Chauvin's knee jam deliberately into George Floyd's neck, increasingly taking the life out of his body. At that point, I realized that as a black man in a position to play a role in change, it was time for action and not just talk. What we're introducing soon in council, civilian review boards and transparency, and in WPD, is not only historic in nature in Delaware's history, but it's truly just the first in the line of cataclysmic changes that the community will be putting, we will be putting on the table with the community to effect change. The community wants change, not just watered-down solutions. The community wants change, not just watered down solutions, tweaks here and there and half-baked crumbs that will not even be, begin to dismantle the systemic racism that exists today in our society. We're tired of being told to wait. We're tired of non-commitment. There needs to be a commitment to a shift in values of what we want and demand. The state has to prove one simple thing. Black lives truly do matter. As Malcolm X said, you can't separate peace from freedom because no one can be at peace if they don't have freedom. Starting today, black Delawarians will be on a path to freedom. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
President, thank you very much. Um, I myself would like to say that the, uh, death of George Floyd was horrific and I certainly pray for his family. Also pray that this, uh, that his passage is actually a, um, impetus for us to make the improvements that we need to make. I think people got to look at themselves and not at government to make those changes. And I think the only way we're going to move forward is if we do that. Many of the things that my fellow comrades have reiterated tonight has been caused by government programs, government, uh, intervention and everything like that. It's the people themselves that need to change. And hopefully with this horrific experience that we will actually make the steps in the right direction to do that. And with that, I certainly pray to God that we do. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Um, thank you, Madam President. Uh, one, um, just wanted to, to, to go back to, um, COVID, um, for a minute. There is a, um, coronavirus virtual town hall that is happening this Saturday with the Deltas. Um, this, I believe, is their last session, um, that they're doing virtually. This one will take place with the CEOs of a lot of hospital systems, um, throughout the state of Delaware. So it's definitely something that you want to tune into, um, on, um, this Saturday at three PM to four thirty PM. Um, and then also, um, we will have a Community Development and Urban Planning Committee meeting on next Thursday, which will be June eleventh, um, at five PM. Um, and we have a couple of items on the agenda for that evening. Um, again, just to, to, my mind is a little bit all over the place, um, uh, due to everything happening, um, at the same time and, and realizing that a lot of the, the, the young people, um, are the ones that are really going to change what happens in this country. And, you know, they have a social, social justice, uh, huge bones in their body that, um, they can't take it anymore. And again, remember that the looting and riots and the protests are happening because I still can't breathe. The first person was Eric Gardner, who was in New York City, who also could not breathe. So you see all these outbreaks because unless you, in some cases, the young people say, unless you break something, you do not see that change happens. And this is what they do in the result of that. And also, it's helpful in getting, um, the prosecutors in order to get these people um, off of these streets and to get these officers fired. And that took, um, a short amount of time by doing it in this way. So I think in a lot of change in order for it to happen, um, it does happen in this and history does repeat itself in this way that it does showcase that, um, change only happens on this level. Um, I will be, um, at the protest tomorrow as well. Um, and I think that the, the individuals who, again, as my colleagues have already said, uh, well organized, they've done this, um, before, um, in the city regarding different protests. Um, and again, there will be individuals who will be out who have, uh, masks for individuals who do not have masks. I know individuals will be out there to give you masks if you don't have one. Um, again, still remembering we do have, uh, COVID, um, and that still having your social distancing. I know there's, um, from what I hear, uh, thousands of people who will be out there tomorrow. So again, just a, to reminder for yourselves to take care of yourselves and be safe at the same time. Um, but also just remember the essence of why we're doing this movement. And not only for the name of, um, George Floyd and his family that was laid to rest today, but also for Breonna Taylor and the others who we sometimes forget, um, because they're not in the forefront of our thought as we're, um, in this space. So making sure that people remember the reason why we're doing this is because of the continuous injustices that happen throughout our country over the four hundred years that we've continued to happen. And that if we don't fix things, we don't want more people, uh, black people being harmed over the course of time, um, up until something is being changed. We don't want another knee on the neck in order to do that. So, um, with that, I will stop there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Walsh? Councilmember Walsh, why don't you stay there?
Is it on now?
Yes, it is.
What our country has witnessed in the last week and a half is a man, Mr. Floyd, who was murdered before our entire nation, our entire nation. What happened to him should be a wake-up call to all of us. And we together as a nation should be heartbroken and outraged. Unfortunately, that's not what has happened in our nation. And that's, it's not the history of our nation and it's not the atmosphere that is in our country right now. We have been taught hatred for the last three and a half years. And I fear what will happen to our country if that hatred that is being taught in our nation continues for another four years. And we do have to get out of the politics of things that are addressed in our country. But even tonight on the floor, politics is brought on the floor once again. And several members who have stated, um, on the floor and also on social media this week about things that need to be done by council. Instead of speaking about it all the time, why doesn't one of them stand up and try and get it done? Why don't they put the legislation together and present it to council as a whole? We have one person who doesn't vote, um, for some things on the floor, who is actually in a position of leadership. He's had almost twelve years where body cams or any other subject could have been put together by him with a coalition of other members to get what he wants done. If this atmosphere continues in this council, it will just be what has happened for the last three and a half years. Nothing will get done if we don't stop fighting each other. For the protesters tomorrow, I will not be there because I am a very high-risk person. I wish them well. I wish them good weather. I hope everything stays peaceful. I hope council members do not, as some have, pushed for more than just peaceful assemblies. And I hope that everyone is safe by the time they all pack up to go home. And that this beautiful, beautiful city will just continue to embrace everything that's good about each of us in this city. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to make some clarity because as seen as though there is some confusion regarding item number forty-eight one five, it is to go into the CBT Commission and then to the Education Youth and Family Committee, just for clarity. Um, but thank all my colleagues for your comments today. And, uh, as I said in my opening remarks, you know, the condolences goes to the Floyd family for such a tragic loss and, um, you know, this, this movement is addressing our public systemic racial policies within the public safety realm. But we have so many other areas that we also need that energy from that movement. And anytime you are building something, you need a plan, you need blueprint, you need a rule and measure to make sure you have all your corners and all your measurements correct. And as we do the business of the city here in Wilmington, we have those same types of tools which are known as our charter, our code, our so if we conduct the business, there are processes that we will follow to maintain order, to accomplish the goal and to come out with a measurable outcome. Um, so with that, you know, there are times and places that we need certain input and professional input coming in. And that's why we have our civic organizations, we have our neighborhood planning councils. Um, and then as we are developing legislation, we have what is called committees. We have standing committees where we come to the table, open to the public to come in at that time to help us get the wording right, to get the legislation right, to, um, provide rules and, and modes of operations for our city. Then it comes to our city council floor where we handle the business of accepting or not accepting the legislation. So in all those processes, there's opportunity for everyone to participate at a certain time and place for everyone to participate. And if we do that, then we will have order. We will have conversation, dialogue, input, inclusion. And the result would be legislation that continues to make the city of Wilmington a great place. So I encourage our citizens to understand the process of how city government is run and what rules, regulations that we must comply with because we took an oath. Um, and in doing so, we hope to have people resolution and progress in the development of our city. Now, this same energy that I see in our young people and in the community who demonstrated what happens, um, we all agree on something. We all agree that the murder of George Floyd was the wrong thing. We all agreed and we all came together and stood for that. But I hope so we continue to all come together and agree that our equitable educational system is the same. So please come to the civic associations and talk to your civic leaders and let them know that you, this is not what you want and that is, that is not what is necessary for a good quality of life for our children and our seniors and our families. Go to the school board meetings and say, that is not how we want our education system. Go to the PTA meetings and say, I need the school to function this way so my children are great. Parents conferences. All these different types of opportunities for public input gives, gives us and gives us a tool by which that we can have say into what happens in the quality of life and all the factors. So yes, we all got together, we came out for this, you know, we all agreed on one thing and that the murder of George Floyd was wrong. But we need to keep that same unity to address many other issues that's plaguing our community as well. Public safety is one, yes, but education is essential. Our housing stick conditions are, 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 um, we're suffering in blight. People are homeless. You know, our, 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 um, environmental injustices, our food deserts. We have a lot of different issues that all it takes is for all of us to come together at the right time. Civic associations, city council meetings, you know, our education, it's school board meeting, PTAs. And then from that, I think this, his George Floyd would not have died in vain and all the others who died to get our attention that is power and unity. It's powering. And let's just not just give people fish, let's teach them how to fish. Because self-resilience is what keeps our, our community and our, our country going. And with that, I accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Peace and safe.
Good night, everyone.